The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Theater at 570 Altman in downtown Ailie, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
The one for the county commission, the second one is the agenda that he starts already, the incentive agenda, page nine, item C one. It's supposed to be ELS, it's dead, and he has this one. A big difference. Okay. And so we'll get you on.
Well, we got you the actual little kiddo. Careful. You never know. Buddy, welcome to today's county commission meeting. Would you all stand and join us in the play? Richard Alba, Ely is the day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll start with public comment, and we'll go to Zoom first. Is there any comment on Zoom, Mike? Not that I see. Okay, public comment in the audience. Any public comment? Okay, George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice doosnet, by the way. Just a reminder, you need some complexion. Mr. Chairman, I've not seen anything on your agenda to consider rescinding the so-called heritage park near the truck stop. That area needs to be developed for housing. There are enough parks now. I want to remind you that consultants such as Loomis have always taken to fill in the community before you expand outside of your footprint. Water and sewer service is readily available without having to put in pump stations, which I wanted to remind you is the mandate of the developer, not the taxpayer, nobody else. We don't need a predator's park near a truck stop and a school. Mr. Chairman, I've yet to see anything on your agenda to address the concern that some property owners need to be considered for loss of income from rentals. When renters cannot or would not pay, the American Rescue Funds allow for that consideration, and you still have funds that can be used for that, and you've not assisted anyone for lost rental income that I know of. That needs to be addressed. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item two C thirty-three, you're to consider the leasing of county property at twenty-seven Connors Court. Again, I will remind you, you should not be competing against the private sector. My concern there is on item four, which deals with the rest, it states in the event of roommates or another form of joint or multiple occupancy, lessors shall be responsible for collecting payment for all parties and submitting a single payment to lesser. I want to tell you, you have a conflict with that in item twenty-seven P under rules which states not provide accommodations for boarders or lodgers, and item fifty-three regarding subletting. Item twenty-eight deals with utilities and services in mid-states that lesser pays mount wheel for electricity, and that needs to come out. If the renter chooses to heat the home electrically, that could show up any gain you have from rent. Who drew up that contract? Thirteen pages, I've never seen anything so ridiculous in my life. Mr. Chairman, the commission has yet to address the lack of ADA access to the southeast corner of the so-called Justice Center. I remind you, this is new construction that requires to meet federal minimum, federal standards. The cost to comply should come out of your building inspector's wages. You hired a duck. You've been told you have a problem, and you get to address that. Mr. Chairman, recently at the county clinic, county hospital, we've been arriving, you had upgrades, yet you don't have proper ADA access on one side. That needs to be addressed. Again, who's your building inspector? What are you paying those big outrageous wages in not getting compliance? You seem to be coming down on the average taxpayer. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you, NRS two forty-four point three six eight.
That's three minutes, George, and that would be the end of public comments.
Take preference. I need some answers. I hope you don't fall on the same trap as the previous chairman. Thank you.
Okay, that's our public comment for regular meetings. Now we will open item one. We will recess regular county commission meeting and open up the fire commission meeting. First thing is public comment.
Travis, there was, she started heading up there.
Oh.
No idea. Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, we will have a public comment for fire commission meeting. Anything on Zoom, Mike? Anything in the audience for fire commission? Public comment. None? George.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for months, if not years, I've brought up the concern regarding the ingress ingress of ABB and Highway ninety-three. Much too narrow, safety hazard, a stop sign keeps getting knocked down. You can see car tracks, truck tracks going over the sidewalk. Can't do that. I want to remind you of NRS two forty-four point three six eight, city building code supersede less stringent provisions of county building code in one mile of fountains in the city. Again, we either have rules and regulations or we don't. Not more than a couple blocks from there. The state's putting in some improvements on their property. No proper ADA access. Who's running the show? What are you paying all these big shots for? And they're not even compliant. I want it addressed. And I asked for something in writing, Mr. Chairman, if you'd be so kind. The previous gentleman may not have been able to do any writing, but I assume you can.
Mr. Chachas, we are not getting into personal attacks. That is not appropriate for public comment.
It's not an attack, ma'am, it's just a statement. If they don't want to do it, perhaps you can do it.
You need to reply.
We need to address the law, ma'am.
Mr. Chachas, if you're going to continue to interrupt me, you're not going to be allowed to do public comment.
You're not a chairman, ma'am.
So you can finish your public comment, but you will not attack any member of this board or any public official. Thank you.
I'm asking for compliance, that's all now. If you can't do that, then you may be in the front also. You don't want to think about that.
Okay, discussion, item one, discussion for possible action direction on the current condition of and options for the potential repair and/or replacement of the Coal Creek volunteer fire station. Lord Carson County Commission Vice Chair and J.J. Gobachia, Ureka County Commissioner and Brett North, White Pine County Fire Chief. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. We have photos for backup, but J.J., our conversation, I think it's worse than what it really, what it looks like on here, so we've been piecemealing this for quite a while.
Yeah, I've got maintenance. They got the tin, I believe it's in it now, and they're going to repair it. They've been out there a couple times, looked at it, so we're going to get it repaired for the time being.
Well, let's talk a little bit further about, other than repair, that thing needs to be replaced.
Needs to be replaced, yeah.
So, J.J., you want to go ahead? You guys have had conversations.
Sure, so thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, for the record, J.J. Gobachia's agenda states I am with Ureka County, but I'm also the chief at Coal Creek when I'm on that side of the hill. So we do have three apparatuses in that valley. That current station will house two of them, so we always leave one out in the winter time, we just winterize that, and leave that little type-six brush engine, the newer one, down the valley. Last fall, we did repair that, and by we, members of the department with assistance from Ureka County, we did repair that building a couple of times. That wind was tearing the sides off that. It's just a pole barn, a two bay pole barn. It has false ceiling in it with wire. It's suspended four-by-eight sheets of rigid foam. They're lined with that foil, that's the old stuff. And so, once that tin becomes degraded, then we get water and moisture on top of that insulation. This spring, it was down on top of the engines after one big windstorm, so we just, I made the decision, we moved the engines. They weren't safe there, we couldn't secure them, so we have an engine, a strawberry engine at Robinson, and an engine at the circle now, where we have volunteers at all of those places, and so they are secured in yards at those three private yards, no county facilities. Also, Madam Vice Chair, last week, upon doing our research for this meeting, we do have an MOU, Mr. Weble remembers he was very integral in getting us done with Ureka County for the management of that station and the maintenance of those apparatuses. Ureka County is still doing that. That MOU expired in August of last year. It was a two, it was a one-year with an automatic one-year renewal. Ureka County is good to sit down and revisit that and do that again. There was language in there about the maintenance, and that's what we have done. When it talks about any larger repairs or anything like that, we've got to come to you guys as the fire board, what do you want to do? If it's an emergency repair, we can do it and build you back, but we're not in that business. We're not going to go and do anything to that building right now. I'll be honest, I'm not even sure who owns it. I don't know if anybody is really sure who owns that building, on that piece of property. So, and just as an aside, the propane bill that Ureka County is paying on that is running about six hundred and forty-three dollars a month through the winter. Again, we can't keep it warm because it's a tin building, dirt floor, and then just those false ceiling panels. So, I understand, but it's your type, and I'm not here to ask for a station, I'm just here to ask that we consider all things, button it up a little bit, and revisit this MOU on behalf of Ureka County, lineup works for you guys.
J.J., do you know who owns that property out there?
Ken Ross Gold owns the property now.
Where it sits?
Yes.
The base property is all owned by Ken Ross.
And J.J., if you want to, we've also had discussion about putting it, you know, if you would go into that so that...
Sure, so I did have conversations with the family. We do have quite a bit of property there in the valley, in the middle of that valley. We do have, exactly in the middle of that valley, we have property, and we would be willing to make an agreement with White Pine County to situate a station on that. It'd be right dead center in the valley, and that's where most of our volunteers are right now, responding out of the farms and ranches from there. And if that was the case, and we did repair this, and it was the mines, it would give us that location to leave a type-six engine there all the time, and maybe they can take over the day-to-day heat maintenance type thing on that if they would, and then we would have that there for that man camp. Because that is a problem for us right now, is it's a little faster response time, but we either can get in an engine and drive there, or we can drive up there, get an engine and drive halfway back. So, but we would be willing to do that on behalf of Gogetee Ranches.
Do you know if the ranch would be interested in partnering with the county to do a domestic well there of some sort?
Yeah, we would definitely entertain that, and we could have those conversations.
I think we need to get Ken Ross and sit down at the ranch and come up with a plan.
I don't know how much Ken Ross, and you know those people better than I do, so far as participating in that to help us if it's not on their property.
I don't know. I can have that conversation with them. We could talk to them and see what they would want to do. I know that they're making, you know, they didn't give us an apparatus a couple of years ago, a type-six, a five-fifty-four, and one of the deals was we will leave something there all the time, because they did donate that one light brush truck. And again, a couple of months ago, I made the decision, we had to pull that out of there, we couldn't secure it. We had people in and out of that building, and I wasn't, I'm not there. Nobody's there that belongs to the department on a daily basis, so I'm not going to speak for them. I imagine they would be willing to cooperate as long as they knew if we buttoned that building that's currently there up, and we could even have apparatus in it, and if we moved everything else to a more secure location.
That was my thought, just discussions with them regarding that particular.
Okay.
If they want, we just turn it over to them if they want some, put some labor.
It might be theirs, because I'm not aware...
Originally, Russell Ranch has owned all of that property in that trailer park, and then Mike Limich, when he was there with Dynasty, they kind of took that over, that management. I believe that was actually a joint NDF built building, without a division of Forestry way back on the day, kind of one of those type things when White Pine County was more involved with NDF. And then, did it belong to the mines? Did it belong to the ranch? I don't know, and I know the, I believe the assessors even tried to figure it out, and nobody really knows. I'm sure it's being assessed to Ken Ross on that property.
I'll need to discuss this with our finance director, but we may look at whether we can utilize some of those American Rescue Plan funds for some of that.
And Elizabeth and I have had those conversations, and also we're looking into SB seventy-four to see if it can be there with money there.
Brett, yeah, Brett has a report. You haven't been digging around with some pole barn replacement costs?
Yeah, right now, I've got two different bids for pole barns. One of them's at one seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-two thousand.
And the sizes, would you, would you get, let me know what the size is?
Forty by sixty.
Okay.
That would have four doors in it, and a man door. And that's with the pole barn, that comes, that's erected, cement floor and insulated, and the doors all put in it for that price. And the other, the other place is still, we're waiting on the concrete bid, so he had to kind of bid it high, but it comes in at about one sixty-seven for the forty by sixty, insulated, cement, doors, all that. I did check on steel buildings, and there were running anywhere from sixty-three to seventy-six thousand, but they just, you don't have, they haven't put up the concrete, and the concrete on them is more involved than pole barns, so my suggestion on that would be to go with the pole barns. They've come a long ways since that one was put up.
And Madam Vice Chair, that pole barn has served its purpose, and you know, we don't need anything fancy, we just need something to keep the heat in in the winter, and then keep the rats out in the summer.
Those those are insulated pole barns, Brett?
Yeah.
Is that large enough, do you guys think?
We obviously never know what growth is going to be. Today it is, I don't see a tremendous amount of growth out there. Forty by sixty, give us three, we can put three in there comfortably.
You have three or four in there comfortably.
Apparatuses, and then if we were leaving one light engine at Coal Creek, which I would recommend we do anyway, for coverage, and I think we could definitely, that would definitely suffice.
Did this include heat? This didn't include heat?
This doesn't include heat. We'd have to have a wire, heat put in it, we'd have to have a well, power run to it, so...
But it's something to work towards.
Just the property that we would consider partnering with the county on, that there's overhead power right there, power line runs right across the property, that's why we looked at that one. Hopefully, you know, if you probably have one pole from out there, a transformer, we'd be ready to go.
Okay.
Probably looking about three hundred for turnkey, heated wire, ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, and today's, I was actually a little surprised how reasonable that cost was for, we had discussed some other buildings here, and over a million dollars, and so maybe we need some pole barns around here. County offices, so, all right, good, very good. I think we'll go up.
So, going forward on this item, Madam Vice Chair and Mr. Chair, I would like to recognize my public works director, District Fire Chief Jeff Rowley. You guys have contact with him and I, and we've got to work this MOU out again with you guys going forward, and so the word, we won't put a more abusive language in there, as you know, run sheets, where are we sending them, so we can attract it out a little bit better. Their chief over there, so relax, he's terrible.
So I'll just look for a motion from someone to work with that MOU, and then to have Mike and Brett work with J.J. and get, bring us a plan back to do this.
Unless you just want to do it for discussion only, then we can just follow...
Yeah, I see a check and see what money we have available now, so we can commit funds to go off bid and acquire something like that, so...
Yeah, if we don't need a motion, I'm good, we'll just manage your, manage.
Are you looking at funds that we have available, funds we have budgeted?
Both.
So the funds we have, what we ask for would be off contingency?
We'll have to see what we have budgeted in the capital group and see what we can...
Well, I for one am really looking at the future, and any, any additions to this year's budget, we've done a twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget, it's good, but looking forward, we got to, we got to really look at what we're going to spend our money on, because we could dig ourselves right in a hole. And putting up a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, four-hundred-thousand-dollar building, I'm okay with the fire engine, as long as we could have a cooperative agreement with Ken Ross, the county, and Ureka County, and somehow split it into three, but not to overburden our budget, and not to really put stress on our twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I'm going to be, I'm going to be on that all year.
I think we'll have an action item once we do the analysis, when Kathy and I come up with a point for that, and we'll have one next again.
Okay.
All right.
You guys with that?
Thank you.
And Mr. Rowley?
Thanks for coming over, you guys, appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to stick around for a couple minutes.
All righty. Okay, we'll move to our next item, item two, discussion update, Fire District, Brett and Pat.
Morning. We're out of time, so I had to do the reports on paper. Still waiting on an engine, pump engine for that construction line, everything's back ordered, like, I mean, everything is. Tender two twenty-one's been repaired, the tender one twenty-one, we're waiting on a fuel pump for it now. So had several wildland fires, we did hit a tinder on one of them for three days, so we earned a little bit on that. Been working with search and rescue to establish better communications out of D E O C, so we've had several site visits, and getting that radio equipment on and running, so when they have an incident, we'll be better to communicate. The other thing, we've got five junior firefighters now, three at McGill, and two in Ruth, so now Ben Ford's got to have a meeting with them, since they got the amount of them, so we're going to have that probably towards the end of the month, first of the month. So that's going good. On the emergency management side, there's some trainings I'm going to have to attend, one in August, one in September, and one in December. August and December ones, the state's going to pay for the travel for me to go over to Carson City, the one in September, we'll probably have to do that. Then yesterday, we had a LSC meeting to approve the United We Stand Grant House Communication Equipment for D E O C, as well as, I think you guys got some?
Yeah, a couple radios.
Couple radios, and Sheriff's Office got a couple radios. So, other than that, that's kind of what we've been up to.
On our end, everything's been running pretty smooth. Tomorrow, we'll have John Barson from Rock Mountain Ambulance out here. We're getting some upgrades down to Irwin Ambulance, the ambulance that we leased from you guys, we're sending back with him for some warranty work. The grill guard on it had a crack, so we got him to fix that on warranty. The air conditioning went out on it again, so he's going to take it back to Utah with them, get that, try and get all them repairs done, try and get all this stuff done, like, everything's done on warranty work, so we're not having to pay any expenses on this. In the meantime, Brett's going to bring one of the other ambulances up to have, so we're still sitting with three ambulances during the time that that's over there. Don't anticipate it being gone maybe more than a week, so hopefully we get that up and running. Didn't have a good response from the volunteers. The only bad side is the training that we did, the firefighter one class, we had four participants from the county, and today we're down to zero. Two of them never showed up at all in the beginning, two of them made it for like a week, and another one made it for like a week, and I believe these are all affiliated with the Silver Lion Department. And I just, I don't know, this is your guys' thing, but I think it's, that just thing ain't working out very well. You know, the last one did good, a couple of the people finished the class, sent him, one guy's quit and left the area, the other guy no longer works out there, he worked, still worked for them, but he works at an office in town, so it's, we're still, we still have no benefit of anybody up there at this point. No resources to rely on whatsoever, so...
So maybe guys go out and talk to the manager or whoever's out there.
Yeah, so...
I know they called me Monday, and they wanted that engine back out there, because the building inspector told them they needed that engine out there, so I don't know what that's going on.
Well, then, then there needs to be somebody that can...
You know, bottom line, I mean, you've got to have liability, you've got to have, if they're going to have an engine out there, they're going to have stuff out there, they need people that are qualified and staffed.
Yes, that's right.
My opinion, and this is me, is they're trying to use White Pine County to suffice their insurance requirements, you know, and I just, I don't, as a taxpayer, I don't think that's right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's something we really should be, be looking at, yeah, it's a good asset for the community, everything else, but, you know, they've got to be, they've got to have some equal buy-in on this if we're going to be doing stuff.
If they have a training crew out there that can respond to ours, and meet you, meet you, get there and get that.
Right, you can't be taking equipment out there to something that don't know what end of the hose of water comes out of, or whatever, you know. We're going to have stuff out there that somebody can get hurt on, and you provide the equipment, I'm sure, I mean, you got, there's got to be a liability, so...
Sure. Is it, my grandfather says, put everything in writing, so I wonder if we just, if we already have an agreement with them, we can update it, that just says, look, we'll, we'll put stuff out there, but you have X amount of people trained, and as soon as they are not...
My suggestion on that would be get them trained before we put anything out there.
Sure. I'm just saying that if we have an agreement that said, the only way anything is out here is we have, you have these many people trained at all times, and then that, it's kind of on them, like, well, we need it for our insurance, okay, well then, then make sure that you have people trained, otherwise it's not going to be there.
Right.
And then we're not being the bad guys, it's just something we all agree makes sense.
That's the end of it. The way it works, I mean, the, you know, there are rules, I'd say. The only other thing is, we've been in a lot of, you know, this week, we've been in a lot of lightning strikes, we've been in a lot of wildland calls also. When we had our spring meeting with B L M, we notified them, okay, so this is what we'll do, is we get paid on a wildland call, a lot of them are coming in nine-one-one through the sheriff's office. So what we do, we get dispatch, the first thing we do is call B L M, say, hey, we got paid for this call, do you need us to go, or do you got enough resources? And yesterday, they had enough resources, they said, no, let us run our resources, if we need you, we'll go. It's going to be different, like we said, if it's, you know, around, and around any private property or structures threatened, we're going to go automatically, but it makes no sense for us, or if the Ruth volunteered or anybody had responded to a fire in the middle of Long Valley where nothing but brush and, you know, I don't want to deplete our resources, should we have an emergency in one of these communities, ourselves to be out chasing a wildland fire that they got plenty of federal resources on, and they feel the same way, they don't want us depleting our resources either, so...
Yeah. We did run on a couple yesterday, because they requested Baker on, but one of them, they ended up sending smokejumpers on, and then one last night, they called Baker out, and it was in Spring Valley, and it was just a couple of single trees. And I was out there on it, I had to set on one of the fires for them, but they went, got the one out, and then they was afraid they'd lose the other one in the dark, so I had to go find it, set on it for them, but other than that, it's, we'd, like you said, we've just been given advice, bottom stop here.
I would recommend, Brett, taking a look at that MOU that we already have with Silver Lions.
Yeah.
And look through that and see where that's at, maybe we need to revisit that, and I don't, I don't remember when that is up, so you might want to take a look at that date.
Yeah, I think it was three years when it was up.
I agree with you, and there needs to be a threshold.
Yeah.
That, that they have to meet in order to have, have resources there.
I agree.
Yeah. I'm going to take them out, but we do some...
Now, does anybody know, is there any mutual aid or any agreements set up with Nite County?
Previously, we had one.
I know the sheriff's office don't, so let me kind of explain where I'm going with this. So I know the sheriff's office won't, they don't, they won't respond into Nite County. Went into here, it's been a month or two months ago, they called for a suicidal subject with a gun somewhere down the oil field area, so we sent an ambulance, two guys on it, high patrol sent a vehicle, tribal police from Duckwater went, spent three hours down there, finally they called back, said, oh, this guy, this guy's fine, he's not suicidal no more, go ahead and cancel, so, I mean, draining our resources going down there, and then we're spending all the man hours on stuff, and that turned out to be nothing. I mean, for sure, if there's a car wreck or fire or whatever you have, we're going to go, we're going to help, we're the closest thing, but it's tough when you've got to deplete resources, go down there for nothing, if we don't have some sort of agreement with them. It just all comes out to an expense of fuel, man hours, equipment, so...
We have had one in the past, and so we'll test, I'll work with Brett, we'll get ahold of their management, and we'll put them in a place where we can get reimbursed for...
Yeah, I mean, it don't happen anytime, but when it does, and like I said, by all means, if they got fired, there's somebody in a car wreck, it don't matter, we're going to go no matter what. But these dry runs that were going on, that, you know, their next closest asset is to call Tonopah, so they're calling us, and I think that's kind of the reason, I don't know if Scott's here, but I think that's kind of the reason that Sheriff's Office has kind of quit going, because they were kind of getting burned on the same thing, going down there, turned out to be nothing, they're, you know, they're taking...
I mean, for sure, if there's a car wreck or fire or whatever you have, we're going to go, we're going to help, we're the closest thing, but it's tough when you got to deplete resources, go down there for nothing, if we don't get some sort of agreement with them. You know, it just all comes out to an expense of fuel, man hours, equipment, um, so.
Uh, we have had one in the past, and so, um, we'll test, I'll work with Brett, we'll get a hold of their management, and we'll put something in place where we can get reimbursed for.
Yeah, I mean, it, it don't have any time, but when it does, and like I said, by all means, if they got fired, there's somebody in a car wreck, um, it don't matter, we're, we're going to go no matter what. But these dry runs that were going on, that, you know, their next closest asset is to call Tonopah, so they're calling us, and I think that's kind of the reason, I don't know if Scott's here, but I think that's kind of the reason that, um, sheriff's office has kind of quit going. Because they were kind of getting burned on the same thing, going down there, turned out to be nothing, they're, you know, they're taking resources away from here and wasting time down there, so. I think it's something to look at, uh, you know, we get.